Good. You're here for years. Um, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda minutes. Okay, thanks, Jack. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. The foremen are not here, so we will go to K R H C.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I know you've seen our financials for the month of January. We don't have the February financials quite yet. But our board of trustees meets in a couple of weeks. So, one of those out in another week or so. As we look at January's financials, we actually were able to produce an income from operations of a hundred and twenty-three thousand. So, that's a positive. Something we've had to work, obviously, quite hard to do. So, healthcare is hard, as you know. One of the things that's been helpful for us, or will be helpful for us moving forward, is the state of Iowa has entered into a program on the Medicaid side of things that helps give some increases through a directed provider payment tax for Medicaid funding for hospitals. And this is something the University of Iowa has had now for several years. They've been the only hospital in the state that's been able to take advantage of that program. And now, it's been open to all Iowa hospitals. So, that's a real positive. We're anticipating that with that, we'll have a little better funding from Medicaid. And national Medicaid continues to be one of our primary and important payers. There's some other changes occurring legislatively with Medicaid right now. It's looking at increasing the length of eligibility for new moms and new babies. You know, extending that to a longer period of time after birth. And so, that's an important thing that the governor's working on. The other thing that might be problematic for us would be reducing the eligibility requirements for Medicaid from a percent of poverty level. So, just kind of keeping an eye on that legislatively and just seeing where that ends up at. But we haven't seen any increases in healthcare for many, many years for Medicaid. And that continues to be, like I said, an important and payer for us. So, helpful, I think, as we look at that. With some of the changes right now with our vendor that we're using for submitting our claims, we're sitting on a little over, actually, yesterday's number was about four point three million dollars worth of claims, predominantly Medicare, but other payers as well, that we haven't been able to submit. And so, as we're working our way through that, we have, at least at this point, some assurance that by the end of March, we would be able to submit claims through our third-party vendor. So, still waiting for some assurance on that before we are able to proceed.
Is there any general reason what the holdup is there, that you can't submit them?
Yeah, there was a, I think there's not enough awareness or enough knowledge yet, but there was a breach. A cyber attack with the vendor that we're using. So, when you get those breaches, you know, we close down all your bases.
I think, now that you say that, I think I may have heard that.
And it's a national thing, so it's not just local. It's really a national problem. So, it's very real, unattacking healthcare is concerning. So, for us, you know, like I said, we're sitting on a number of claims now that we haven't been able to process or submit. So, yesterday, that was four point three million. We're in a good situation from a cash standpoint. You know, we're still very strong from a cash standpoint. So, fortunate from that respect. How many hospitals across the nation aren't as strong as we are here in Iowa in general and as strong as we are here in Cassuth County? So, grateful for that. Stephanie's got a few things to talk about, and I'll talk about lab tech.
All right, so we have quite a few celebrations that we'll be recognizing here this month. First one being on March eighteenth. Our nurses won an award for communication for the second year in a row. So, we were named a top hospital for nurse communication. So, we'll be recognizing our nursing staff on March eighteenth for that. We also were notified that through CMS, Centers for Medicaid Services, that we have now increased to a five-star rating for patient satisfaction. So, that's a really big deal. There aren't too many five stars. And lastly, Dar won again. She was recognized through Becker's Hospital Review as one of the nationally world CEOs to know. And this is her third year in a row for getting that award.
Good way to go.
Thank you, and we know that isn't about me at all, honestly. It's about the team. So, thank you for that. It really is about the team that we have. We have such a great team. That when you think about one of the top one hundred, you know, for patient satisfaction, and one of the top one hundred for nurse communication, and one of the top one hundred for physician communication, and myself, you know, being recognized as one of the top one hundred, that's really a big deal. There's over six thousand hospitals in the United States. So, you know, we have really good healthcare right here in Cassuth County. And like I said, it's not about me, but thank you. I'm so honored to represent Cassuth Regional Health Center and our team because we do have an outstanding team.
Give them all credit for it.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm surrounded by a good team, so without a doubt, we have great actors. I mean, we're just blessed all around. Great medical staff, and a lot of lawyers as well. So, lab tech recruitment. So, we brought a Filipino husband and wife into our community two weeks ago. Thank you. Stephanie and I went and picked them up here for a dodge. And tomorrow, there's another Filipino lab tech coming. And so, we have been working to recruit Filipino lab techs. We're just blessed with the services that we have available. And we've just been so grateful to have them join our team. So, it's a process, you know, to bring in somebody from another country. And it takes a while for them to get their papers so that they're able to begin working. But right now, we're providing temporary housing, hints and sleep rooms in the lower level of the hospital. So, good to keep bringing others to our team. And fill positions that are desperately needed. What questions do you have for Stephanie or I?
Presentation that you sent us.
Yeah.
It's an improved presentation.
Yeah, there's some new slides there.
Yeah, we've been trying to continuously improve the information we're providing, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Have a great day.
Yeah, you too. Thanks, Derek.
Today, as a board, with a mayor...
I'm sorry, didn't hear you, Jack.
Usually every year, the hospital tells you what their level's going to be.
Yeah, we haven't done that yet. We're still working on the budget. So, our budget hearing is set. I don't have my phone with me to pull up the date, but we've got that set up. So, because you know, there's some changes, Jack, that really delay the period of time in which we have to finalize the budget. And so, I know we'll be definitely on time with those.
Yeah, Collette did, she did contact me, and she will be on the agenda, so it's a need for...
I think so, but I don't know. Yeah. Kind of work in one day at a time. It's fine, we're still working on it. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Have a great day.
You too.
You too.
Thanks.
Good morning. Good morning.
All right. We will go back to secondary road foreman here now. How are you guys this morning? Any major projects in the works?
Maintaining these roads, hauling gravel. It's nice, rain shower would be welcome.
Yeah, looks like we'll get one.
Thursday.
Hopefully, Thursday.
Chance of doing that, advantage, advantage on Thursday.
If they don't take it out again.
Before it hits earth.
It's too nice of weather, that's the problem.
Yeah. It was seventy degrees yesterday, it was crazy.
Everybody's getting ideas, you know, where they're going to work.
Did you get a chance to look at that tile down in West Bend?
I haven't got any paperwork on it.
Oh, okay, sounds good. Yep. All right. Anyone have anything else for foremen? All right.
Who's the young guy you got with you? You didn't introduce him.
This is Alex Langall, and Alex is Award, Service Award. Years of Service Award, I think. It's on the agenda.
That's the next thing we'll do.
Alex, fifteen years, is that right, Alex?
Yep.
And he's also assistant foreman for us.
Well, sounds...
Eighteen whole years, Alan? You ready for another fifty, or?
Thirteen, maybe.
All right, well, I think we can move to years of service here next, so. K R H C down. Can do. Dean?
Yep.
Ready for your photo?
Twenty-five years.
Where do you want us to?
Where? Who wants to sign it? You want to sign it?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for your year. Alex, you're up next. Fifteen. Thank you for your service count. Where do you want to be?
We have one also.
One more big smile, Alex.
Yeah. Busy, we'll get one more here. Done.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you all for coming.
We'll see you another twenty-five years. Probably not. Wasn't, it wasn't fun for the first twenty-five. I don't know if I'll make it.
Thank you.
That'll be good, Owen. All right. Handwritten claim is up next for Master's Touch for postage for the Max Lovey budget, it looks like. Is there anything you wanted to?
No, just that it had to be in by two, by yesterday. They needed it before they put out the mailing because they have to prepay it. So, we had to get it in by yesterday, so that's why it's a handwritten claim. So, no, there's, it's pretty self-explanatory, I guess.
Well, entertain a motion to approve. Are any questions? I move to approve. Is there a second? Roger, thank you. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Transfers are in our packet for general basic secondary road, or basic secondary road. Any questions on those? Otherwise, we can let the record reflect or acknowledge them. Next up is to approve and sign Tenex software solutions incorporated purchase agreement. This would be the election software we've discussed a couple of times. Is there any questions from the board or anything you want to highlight, Pam?
No, so, this is the one I did have Todd look over. And he thought it looked good. The only change that he made was, or that he noticed was on page five, under ten point zero. They had section twenty-four instead of section twenty-two. So, we had them change that. And then, he just wanted, Todd wanted to point out to us that in the paragraph above that, it says that we have to disclose to Tenex if there's any records request for the information, which I think is standard. He just wanted us to make sure we knew that. So, that was all that he brought up. So, I think that's, otherwise, it's pretty standard.
Okay, no, that's good to know. Otherwise, any questions for Tammy? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
When did you expect to get the equipment and stuff?
So, he said that it usually takes a month or so from the time that they order it, once this contract is signed. I told him that we were concerned. We wanted to make sure we had it in time with the primary election and in time for training. And he said that that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay. We're just worried if there's other counties going to this, that there might be a backlog.
Well, I know the other county that did change has already gotten their, Spoon County has already gotten their equipment. So, hopefully, we'll be okay. So, they are having a users meeting when we're down at Isaac for Tenex on the thirteenth. So, we'll get a chance to talk to them in person a little bit, too. I think their Tenex representatives are going to be there. So, I will kind of talk to them in person a little bit, let them know why, you know, we're kind of in a hurry. Because our training for election workers is May, the middle of May. So, we need to, we need to be trained and ready to go, so we can train.
Okay, yeah, well, if it's a month from when we do it, should have middle of April ballpark, it has some cushions, so that should work.
Yeah, I think we'll be okay. He assured me that we would be okay.
Are they going to have any kind of support outside to help with?
Not outside, but they have support that we can call. They don't, they can't legally, but we do have, we can call them if there's any...
For like initial setup stuff?
Well, they'll teach us all how to do that ahead of time.
They do that all in the beginning.
Yeah, that's part of the training process.
All right, well, do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
Some of them.
Okay, is there a second? Carter, thanks. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Carter, you want to give Doug a call?
All right, Doug, we're ready for you. Thanks.
Oh, you're fine. We should change this to March...
Morning. Go on, say it.
Which line?
Either supervisor has to sign, so he wants to sign here and then print, and then everybody can sign. And I can print the names, too, if you just want to say.
That's fine. We got time here. There you go. Sign a print date and print underneath there.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Three twelve.
Just go on.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good night. We are up to the adding Christmas Eve holiday. And the resolution is in our folder. Sure. So... You write the resolution number? Perfect. Okay, this resolution number would be zero, three, one, two, two, four, zero, one. Is there any discussion on it? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve resolution zero, three, one, two, two, four, oh, one.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Plaque?
Yes.
Jerps?
Yeah.
Black jerps?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Yes.
Get that signed, please.
You need two copies.
I assume Tammy would like one.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Construction in the right of way. Looks like we got one in our folder.
Correct, there is one request. This is from Mid-American Energy Corporation. There's a bridge that's located on County Road B nineteen, approximately a half a mile or so from east of Thirty Avenue. So, it'd be just west of Central School. Mid-American Energy has a gas main that is attached to our bridge, Cassuth County's bridge there, and they would like to rewrap the entire length of gas main and put some wrap on the spacers, the hangers there just to continue maintenance on that. I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
All right, if we could get your signature, please, Kyle.
Yep.
Bottom there. All right, thank you.
All right, then, discussion.
Yes. Yesterday, if you remember, I think it might have been even last week, there was a tile crossing, or two weeks ago, a tile crossing for Roy Metzger was approved. That tile crossing was installed yesterday. They did not notice, notify the county engineer or any of the work. We were running up there today. We contacted Mr. Metzger, asked why he did not contact the office. He tried to contact people by cellphone and not the office. I don't know what to expect there, but if there are issues, let Mr. Metzger know and go from there. We have a bridge construction started on P sixty-four, two hundred and ten Avenue, south of Tyke. Merriman started up down by George Gunters again with that bridge project. Next Tuesday is our length for our asphalt work. Still have the open positions at Lakota and Mechanic Shop. We are going to be putting out some quotes for the motor graders. Last week, we attended some people in our office, the Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa Conference. And at that conference, Cassuth County was awarded some, and recognized for some things. We were awarded Iowa's Best County International Roughness Index for our paved roads. We were, Cassuth County was awarded Iowa's Best County Pavement Condition Index for their roads. And then, we were also recognized just simply for the amount of asphalt roads Cassuth County does have. We are also working on that request from Phil Haldorfer for road vacation. Summit Carbon Solutions, I think everybody received a email from Summit Carbon Solutions, but there sounds like there will be a public meeting sometime May sixth. Equipment with our maintenance. We are starting to see some availability issues with sterling parts. It's difficult to get the OEM parts. We're getting some aftermarket, which sometimes work, sometimes do not. But we're also seeing where we may need to start going to junkyards and getting pieces off of old parts. We have, I think, us fourteen sterling trucks yet in our fleet. So, it's an issue that we are concerned about. We'll do our best to keep maintenance up on them. That is all that I have for the county engineer as far as planning and zoning. We did have a request for a change of zoning, and we are scheduling a meeting of the zoning commission for April one, which is a Monday. And then, we will also, the board supervisors ultimately approve that change of zoning. That would be on April two. We will talk about that more as information becomes available. We're just in the beginning of that. And then, for Cassuth Waste Management Association, we have scheduled the annual meeting for the Cassuth Waste Management Association for April ten at seven o'clock. And then, self-insurance. We had sent out what Michelle had given us for information. I was not at that meeting, is that, was that the correct?
That dollar figure she sent out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The board had indicated that was three and a half million?
Yep.
Okay, that is, but that is the right policy.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all that I have.
Okay.
Congratulations to Engineer and Secondary Road Department on the awards.
Well, it's the county. Been fortunate that we've had enough funding to do maintenance on them, and we do a lot of work to keep them up. So, yes, we're proud of it, thank you very much. But it is Cassuth County, it's not just one office.
Last night, I was at a NIAH meeting, and Roland Barnes approached me. He wants to talk to you sometime about disowning regulations in Cassuth County.
Okay. Okay.
And he gives his daughter, I said, I should have seen.
Um.
He's representing, you know, energy and wind company.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, so they're, they're interested in building more windmills in Northern Iowa.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
He had several questions.
All right, yeah, I'm giving motion a call.
Um, Doug, I did have a question, uh, I got texted yesterday. Do we have any, uh, plans for resurfacing R fourteen?
Uh, I am looking at our five-year program right now. I know that there's a stretch of R fourteen, uh, that from Highway nine south, uh, so many miles that is, uh, is, is in difficult shape, however, prices make it difficult to get everything. In fact, I think it might've been included, um, but I, I gotta look at that and I'll be bringing that up to the board supervisor.
Sounds good.
Was, do you know what stretch of R fourteen they're talking?
Probably the same stretch you're referring to, but they weren't specific.
My stretch is about brand new. That wasn't that old, that many years ago that decade.
Yeah, I'm sure it'd be that northern end, south of nine.
We have other ones too that are getting rough.
Oh yeah, there's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
There.
P thirty is another one, south of Soy City.
Yes. We're looking.
Four-way bridge roads getting bad north.
Yeah.
And that's R fourteen also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
True.
No, four-way bridge going north, it gets worse as it goes further north.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that, that was recycled back in the seventies and those recycled roads are, um, we've seen, uh, with the expansion and contraction of that asphalt, uh, it causes problems as far as rigibility.
She's a slammer now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Right, well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Doug.
Thanks Doug.
Ready to roll right into drainage? Okay, um. I guess. Roger, do you wanna start with anything for this topic?
Do the voluntary annexation, whether we should approach it or not?
Yeah, that's the next thing on our agenda.
Triple E approached me, they had tile projects to do for this summer and one of them is in this area that, uh, we're talking about. You got a map or anything there?
I put it in the folder, so it should be in your board folder.
And.
Yep. Yep, there's the map.
Before we call Mr. Weber in and, and give him any information, I wanna know if it's applicable or possibly to do, or if you wanna just not do it. It, uh, before we spend a lot of time and effort and money trying to figure out if we wanna do it or not.
Yeah, I guess I would say, I've visited with Tyler on this and I think you have as well. Um, he's, he's got stuff kinda ready or close to ready in that regard, but, um, I think there's a couple of major factors to consider. One is the back assessment because, um, just because those acres could potentially come in now does not mean they should drain for free on the improvement that was done for that district.
Well, that's why I had Mark run those numbers.
Yep, so those, those.
It would be my recommendation that he pay, if we did do it, then he would pay the cost of what those acres are going in through drain four, what the assessment was.
Yep.
And I also asked him what it did to the coefficient and he said it didn't affect the coefficient much. It didn't take it below a half inch.
The three-quarter, three-quarter, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, and, and yeah, I did look at those numbers with Tyler. Um, it still does meet the advertised three-quarter inch coefficient, but that is figuring, um, brand-new pipe conditions, which is what they're built off of, so, I mean.
Well, the other thing is, is it only comes into his property and gives him an outlet. It doesn't really go across his property. So it would be his private tile, that would have to be sized to that three-quarter inch coefficient.
To make use of it.
To make use of it and I don't know, I didn't talk to him yet before I go through all that effort. I want some direction from the board on whether we're gonna do it or not, or whether we should do it. Cause we have other issues on where people have crossed drainage districts. And we have to say if we're gonna set a precedent and make them pay for the improvement on the new tile, now's the time to do it.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with that. I think the, the principle of making sure everyone in the district is treated fairly, including the ones that paid the first time and the ones that are coming in after the fact. The back assessment, I think, is the critical piece, but it also still has the advertised three-quarter inch, which is what the district expected to get. So I, I don't see. This has just enough extra capacity that was built into the system just because of the design sizes that you can add a few acres in, when you get to substantial acres, it doesn't work. But for a few acres, um, as long as everyone's treated fairly, I think it's actually a benefit to the district because it would, it would share the load a little bit. Yep.
Seventeen point five acres that are really, out of the twenty-nine that are gonna need time from what I can see. So he's adding seventy point, uh, twenty-nine acre, it's still water sheds to drain eight.
The surface.
Surface drain.
Surface water.
So he, you can't take him on eight, he'd be in both.
He'd be in both. Yep.
Which, um, I do not, I have not talked to him until we really, if he figures out how much money it's gonna cost him to drain those acres, he might change his mind.
I'm only just, as we're talking through this, I believe waivers were an option for the original project and I don't remember if we allowed waivers for this last one, I think we might have. So.
We did ten, ten year.
Okay, yep, is that something we can offer for something like this?
I.
I don't know if you can or not.
I don't either, and I, legally, I'm not gonna give you an answer. Cause we've never.
I, I know, I know we can through the, through the main projects, but never, never looked at a dollar figure like this for a voluntary annex, cause the only other ones we did were five acres or less and they were, they were on drains that had not been improved, so.
This is the first time that we're gonna do it in an improvement project.
Yep.
That's why we're doing this process right now, to make sure that we do it correctly and we can cross all our Ts and dot all our Is and, and it's very clear what we're doing.
And as trustees, it's our responsibility.
Oh, cool.
Um.
So I do not know if Mr. Weber, after he figures out.
The price tag.
Yeah, if he's even gonna wanna do it. And that would be our next step.
Yeah, and it wa- I mean, it would have to be based off the engineer's numbers for acres and stuff. So the cost per acre would be the big thing.
Yeah, and I, we got this spreadsheet from Mark.
Yep.
It, uh.
And that was some of Tyler's recommendation too. He said it would be classified, it would have to be classified in kind and he would recommend back assessments to keep it fair and equitable for the whole district. I guess if, if we go through the process and cross all Ts and dot all our Is and make it fair for everyone, I'm good with that.
So I think the next step would then to have Mr. Weber come into a board meeting and give him the proposal and.
We, we probably should have, either you can communicate with them or whatever, but we probably should have Tyler submit his report to the board, um, at the same time. Because then he could, he could be here for the conversation. But we would just, and we'd probably need to do a little bit of checking on this, but I'm pretty sure we would need to acknowledge the report and then go through a public hearing process and notify the district and do it that way. It wouldn't just be a quick motion, it would have to be, we'd have to notify landowners and have a hearing.
Yep, we'll have to have a hearing, we'll have to notify all the landowners on that drain.
Yep. So, yeah, if we, if we do all that, I'm good with it.
I think that we're following all the procedures that are spelled out in the code.
Yep.
What I'm.
Yeah, we'll just have to double check, make sure we cross all the Ts and dot all our Is, but I'm fine with that. Anyone else got any thoughts?
Nope.
Jack?
Jack, should be good.
As long as we go through the process.
Do you need a motion for any of that or?
No, not from, not.
I wanted permission to proceed before we spent any money.
Well, and when we initially got this, part of the agreement was that he would pay the engineering fees. So, I mean, that's on the landowner anyway.
Yep.
But.
But we're spending somebody else's money.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's. Yeah, we gotta do it properly for everyone in the district, not just him.
Yeah, obviously. So we'll have to give him, uh, a number, Mark, about what it would be for the assessment.
Yep.
And I think we should probably write him a letter so that it's done.
Okay.
We'll, we'll draft something, Mark.
Check with Tyler for the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I'm pretty sure he's got acres and all that put together, so yeah, you can double check or.
Yeah, and then, in, in a letter explaining that he will still be in eighty, but these acres will be assessed on both drains.
Yep, it'd be split off percentage-wise.
Right. Surface water still goes to eighty.
Usually seventy to the tile and thirty to surface water.
Yep.
Sometimes more or less depending on the situation, but that's usually their rule of thumb.
Does that sound good, Mark? And then maybe if he wants to, then we might be able to get it done this year yet, otherwise, if he doesn't want to, I don't have to hear about it anymore.
Yep. Well, that works. Anything else for this topic or we can move on?
I don't.
Okay.
I think that's all we need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Drainage repair requests up next.
Darn, looks like I'm just out again.
You know someday you're gonna get some, and you're not gonna be in some cock game.
Yeah, right.
It's gonna be.
That'll be.
That one coming right through the middle of the city of Oklahoma.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be underneath some house and we're gonna have to tell the landowner, he's gotta move his house so we can fix his tile.
Yep, yep. Piss off half the town, digging up people's basements. All right, Roger, you wanna start? Looks like.
Yeah, I got one here, it's number eighteen on drain eighty-three. Uh, it's an outlet pipe rusted out and it needs repair. And it's in Cresco Township, so I think I'll have rights to do it, if that's all right, Mark?
Okay, Carter?
Uh, I've got one, uh, number sixteen in PAK one on the open ditch. Request from Dewey Burning House, Garfield, section nine, west side of the open ditch, sluing off large chunks missing. And I, I guess on that, I've trying to get Colin rolling so that we can have a landowner meeting before spring work, but, uh, I don't know, I, I need to bug him again, so this would be included in all that.
Yep. Yep.
We're getting closer.
That's what he tells me, but, I mean, I don't know, I talked to him maybe three, four weeks ago and he said, you know, I'll hear from him in a couple of weeks, but I need to.
Bug him again?
I need to bug.
So do you wanna just send that to Jacob from Westergaard so they can make sure it gets incorporated?
Yeah, probably, yeah, yeah.
Send the request.
There's no use in doing it individually.
No, no. So, cause that would be all part of that.
No, and then mine is number seventeen, Springfield thirty-five for drain one fifty-one, broken tile, clearing grease, so nothing to earth shattering there. Um, do I have a motion for the supervisors to take care of their requests? Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carried unanimous?
That's mine and Jack's contributions too.
Thank you guys for your hard work. We appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, that'd be John.
Yeah.
On the east side.
First tile, county tile owner, he's in hospitals out there.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, there, there's a bunch out there.
Out through Bill Lindgren's.
I think there's one right under a basement, if I remember right.
Yeah, I looked at one out there that runs underneath like five different houses and it, I think it was right underneath one of them and it catches the corner of another one.
Yep.
And that house didn't build the basement because that was there.
Okay.
So, you know, when that one fails, it's your job to fix it, cause no contractor wants to do it.
You just go out there and dig it in by hand.
Yep.
I gotta shovel, it'll be all right.
All right. We are up to discussion with our auditor. Thanks, Mark.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Um, so the first thing I have is.
Well, just listening for any issues in secondary roads. I'm with Alliance Energy, we have the coal plant wind power.
Okay.
Um, the first thing is I received a notice of a voluntary settlement, um, from Snap-on Tools versus Cassouth County Board of Review. Just have it for you guys to look at, see, make sure you guys are aware of that. And then we will file it away, as you know, anything else we need to do with that.
Don't think so.
Secondly, ISAC is this week, Wednesday through Friday. Are any of you guys going?
Yep.
anybody else? Okay, I'm going down too, so I'll be there Wednesday, Thursday and Friday as well.
Yeah, I'm heading down tonight.
Okay.
For County Day at Capitol tomorrow.
Yeah, I was hoping that I would make it tomorrow, but, uh, yeah, I probably won't, I was gone yesterday, so, um. And then I emailed you this morning.
Wanna look at this?
I emailed you guys, um, this morning, a copy of the notice of the tax levy that will be in the paper on Thursday. And then we have our hearing set in March twenty-sixth, so watch the paper Thursday, that will be in there. Um, so if you get any questions.
One, how does a tax levy work if we don't even have it from the hospital yet?
That'd probably be one of the other pieces to plug in.
They do their own, so that, that's separate than ours.
I know it is, but it's still a tax levy.
Yeah, but theirs will be in too, but it, it will be separate.
They, they would have a separate public hearing process, so Tammy would plug it in after they go through their process, right?
Yeah, so I have to go in and certify theirs.
It's kinda, I would say it's kinda like ours, it's just parallel, side by side in the timeline.
Right. Yep. So.
Still part of the levy, but I'm, I'm saying it's, it's getting dysfunctional the way we're doing it.
Well, the, the, I think the intent of what they are making us send out is not.
No, so.
Is not actually going to materialize.
What we're sending out is the notice that we have to send out on the twentieth just includes the school, the cities and the county part of it, not Cassouth.
But then when the total taxes come out, it'll be different.
It'll be, it'll be separate than, like ours.
So, and then we'll get called, let's say the letter wasn't accurate.
Well, the, 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 that's not part of legislation, so.
That's exactly what they spelled out.
Yeah, that's not part of the legislation, so.
We, yep.
But it won't be accurate.
No, but yeah, legislation did not include that in their bill, so.
Yep.
It doesn't.
People.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me either, the way you look at it.
Well, and it's gonna confuse people because it does. Well, and it's gonna confuse people because it doesn't, if you look at it, it shows what it's gonna do on their property. And it's gonna show a negative amount. But if you look at the levy, the levy rate is going up. It's an increase in levy rates, so, and it doesn't say that anywhere on the notice. So, it's gonna confuse people.
Yes.
Yep.
So, but that's what the bill says.
I think it's confusing at best, but.
The object of the bill is to make people aware of what their taxes were going to be.
And it's not gonna.
Instead of doing that, we are confusing people on what their taxes are going to be.
Yeah.
Correct.
It, the, the other purpose of it was to notify them of when the hearing is, and it does have that. So, you know, we may have more people at the public hearing, which is good, because then they can ask those questions at that time.
From zero to one or two maybe.
Yeah, so, um, and then, um, wondering if you came up with any ideas, um, for board members for.
I guess we've disappeared on that again.
Uh, NRHA.
Keep that in folder.
Okay, I'll keep asking every week, so.
I got asked last night again.
Uh, I, yeah.
Yeah, so I know there's a lot of things.
Actually, if our meet, if we keep moving the meeting along, I might be able to try and squeeze in a extra conversation and see if I can find one today.
And then next week, um, so far, all we have is approved quotes for BMW control specialists for drainage maintenance. And then, um, the calendar is looking a little bit better. We are gonna have. So, one of the requirements for the mailing has to go out on the twentieth. So, once we send the mailing to Master's Touch, they will send it to us for proofing, but it won't be until after hours. So, my staff and I will be here after hours to prove, um, the tax notices. Um, there'll be about seven, about fifteen thousand sent out, so, um.
Better make sure they're correct.
They will go out on the twentieth, so. Six thousand was for the postage, and then we'll be getting them, you know, for the, the rest of the efforts of Master's Touch, so.
And I, I saw in there, um, anything, they estimate high, but anything else we can put towards, um, the credit on our bill for printing, right?
Right, because, um, the treasurer's office uses Master's Touch. That's why we chose them, cause they use them for their tax notices also. So, that way we're using the same companies.
Yep. Sounds good.
And then, of course, we're rubbing up for the next election primary, June fourth. Uh, March twenty-second is the deadline for candidates to file their nomination papers if they're gonna be running for an elected official, uh, position in Cassup County. Um, actually, or state. Yeah, the end of next week, so, um, yeah, that deadline is fast approaching also, so, and then we will start getting that process, um, going and ready, so. And looking forward to new, like we talked earlier, new software coming in. Um, we, I'll be meeting with Ten X this week at ISAC. Um, they're gonna have a users meeting down there. I did find out yesterday, Boone County is another county. I know there's a couple of other counties that are switching to Ten X, but Boone County is another one. And I have been talking to, um, her through this process. She let precinct atlas know that they would be discontinued because they have their equipment. Everything's up and running, so they let them know. She was informed by them that because there's a twenty-eight E agreement, that they will be required to pay, um, the four thousand dollar yearly fee. Because they weren't notified by January tw- thirty-first, cause I was gone yesterday. I have not had a chance to look into that. So, I am gonna grab a copy of that and take it down to Todd and have him look into that for us. I was not aware of any of that information, um, so, uh, and she was not either. So, we're gonna have to pull that out and have Todd look into that for us, so.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know, if they, that agreement was definitely before I was here, so, uh, hopefully we have a copy of that.
Yeah, we would have to.
We'll look into that soon as well, um.
Cause that's not a yearly agreement, is it? Is it the?
I don't know. I'd have to look at it, and, um, we didn't even make the decision to enter into it before January thirty-first, so I don't know how that can be, uh.
I bet it's got a revolving.
Yeah, so, um, we'll look into that and pull, see if I can pull that and get that to Todd as well. And I, I have not talked to precinct atlas because we don't wanna discontinue if our software isn't ready or if we had a snag. We didn't wanna discontinue and then try to have to go back, so I have not been in contact. I'm just going on what Boone County is telling me at this point, so.
Yeah.
So, but I will look into that.
Okay, yep.
And I think that is all I have.
Okay. Jack?
I'm there leaving last week.
Roger, um, I had an I-COG meeting last night. The government hasn't sent all the information yet, so we couldn't get the audit report finalized and approved. So, that'll be in May instead of now. Usually they did it in March. Um, there's six buses that were new that we ordered for ninety-eight thousand. And when they did show up, finally, there were a hundred and forty-something.
Oh, wow.
So, there's a lack of about three hundred and fifty thousand there and government funding from the federal government that didn't come through. And might not come through, so it's gonna affect everybody.
Ouch.
Yeah, but it's kind of the normal thing anymore.
Yeah.
And we're mandated to do it, but we're not funded.
If you look at the property tax notice that we sent out and why our ta- our, the tax levy rates went up, that is one of the things that are put on the bottom was unfunded mandates. So, you know, I think it's affecting everybody.
When, yeah, when we looked at that.
Trouble is, it trickles down to the county all these things, and people don't realize it, but we're gonna, you know, with our two percent growth. If we have all these mandates that aren't funded, that still comes out of our property taxes.
Yeah.
So, this is another, another one that's an unfunded mandate that's gonna come triple down to the counties.
But the state has a giant surplus.
Three billion. But they also don't backfill.
Not anymore.
No, so, like, when we talked to the state about it.
And, and as I've mentioned before, reimbursement for juvenile detention, although it did kinda come back this year during COVID. When everything went through the roof, they didn't even meet their constitutional obligation for funding for that. And they've been on the low end of that obligation for decades, so.
And, and we need new drivers because we got seventy-year-olds that are putting in fifty-six hours a week driving.
Yeah.
Which isn't really good. And that was probably the highlights of it last night. Um, and then we talked about four eleven afterward. We all got an email on it.
See, actually, that's, that's not really what it was portrayed to be in that email. I called Dave Rowley about it right away, and, and actually, they did talk about that at the legislative forum here in Elgona, the last one. And the original intent of that legislation was because, I don't remember where. It was either a city or a county somewhere was trying to put an ordinance in place that you could not have gas stoves.
What?
Yeah, and, and, and there, and I think it was in regard to green energy and all that sort of stuff. So, the intent of the legislation was to not prohibit or not having counties or cities prohibiting consumers from choosing what energy sources they use. And that is changed, like, the bill is not what, it has nothing to do with ordinance. No, it hasn't, the, what she, I don't, I didn't look at all what she sent. But the bill that they were having subcommittee on yesterday had nothing to do with county ordinances for wind or solar or any of that.
How did this get passed through the Senate?
Because it's not what she's talking about.
I know, but I mean, it got passed through the Senate and really is taking the power from the county away.
Mm-mm, no.
Well, that's what I read.
Yeah, that's.
County shall not adopt an ordinance, motion, or resolution, or amendment that limits the consumer's access.
Consumers, consumer.
Well, but, but a consumer, I mean, whether you're.
We're not, we're not limiting access to the consumer by, by having ordinances with wind or solar. That is, that is.
Well, you kind of are.
You are, cause then de facto prohibits of the sale or the production of the energy source or the related infrastructure necessary to provide the customer access. So, we're not able to regulate infrastructure.
I'm, and I don't know if that's the current version of the bill. I know it got changed. It was, there was a lot of concerns about that initially, and it got, it got revamped because that was not the intent of the bill.
I know it's not the intent, but to me.
The way I read it, the infrastructure necessary to provide consumer access to.
But did any of.
The CO2 with the wind energy.
But did any of you guys look up?
Consumers are not able to tap in and give that a chance.
No, did any of you guys look up the actual bill that they're voting on? Because what she put in the email could have been an old version.
This.
But if you read right before it, it says, "Energy source means any fuel or power source used to power an engine." Including but not limited to aviation biofuel, natural gas, et cetera, et cetera.
To me.
But.
Reach out to your legislators.
Yeah, to me, I, I, I also think that it, it's going down the slippery slope where it's gonna say that no counties can regulate gas lines or anything else.
It is taking power away from the county, no matter how you look at it, and whether it's a good thing or not, in principle, you know, you don't wanna. If, if, if the, some regulation came through and says, "I can't have, you know, propane in my home," all that, you know, it's, that's a problem.
And that was, that was their, that was their intent of the legislation, from what I've been told, is the intent was a direct restriction on the consumer in their house. Not, not on large construction projects or anything in that regard. It's the direct access in their house. Or in their, in their work, whatever it may be, but it's the consumer's direct access to it.
I'm gonna say, you're probably right on the intent of the bill, but when I read the bill, it almost is foggy on what.
Gotta make sure a lawyer can't argue the other way.
Right. I'm just saying, watch it.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then the other thing, I was approached last night by Merlin Barnes, and he wanted some information on our, uh, ordinance for wind.
Yeah.
And solar, and I said, "We didn't have one on solar." He's representing a power company now that wants to build solar and possibly wind in northern Ohio.
What, he said Inver energy, that he was with?
So, at some point, the board should discuss before somebody comes. What is your stance on wind and solar in Cassup County? Do you wanna stick with the ordinance and, uh, that we have and the restrictions that we close to any more wind, or do you wanna open it up? If a wind company comes in and gets proposal for something, somewhere in the county. Are you a hundred percent against having another wind farm?
I personally am. That's where I'm at.
But that's, yeah, just make it clear so that people don't spend a lot of money going out trying to set a wind farm.
Right.
And then have.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, and we can have that conversation, I guess.
But it's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you said that was with Inver energy?
Yeah.
That's who.
Cause I was.
Did the project in southeast Part of the county, and they sold that and sold it again.
Yeah.
I've, I've actually heard that the transmission lines in our area were plumpful, and they can't even run all the wind turbines they have right now.
Well, they can't, cause you can't get rid of the energy over in Mississippi until that line gets done.
Yeah, so they can't until, until there's more transmission lines here, they can't. It, it's, it's basically useless for them to build new projects because they can't sell it anyway during peak times.
Yeah, but that problem's getting alleviated right now in Wisconsin, so we're looking at when it affects what brought it up.
Okay.
Well, and the more other industries, like we had the methanol plant conversation, the more other industries require renewable fuel sources to power them. They're just looking for anywhere on the power grid to supplement that.
And there was a conversation about this CO2 and how it affects, like, what go to ethanol plant last night. And they have proposals to come out to the farmer's for green corn to make, green.
Carbing credits.
Carbing credit and how it's grown. And right now, it looks like they're very much not in favor of the farmer being that much control over what you do. So, keep abreast of it.
Yeah. Do you have his contact information?
I gave.
He gave the Doug.
Gave it to Doug. He wanted to talk to our.
Yeah, zoning administration.
Yeah, so, that's the place for it to go today. That's.
Okay.
That's all I had this week.
Sounds good. Josh?
Uh, didn't have any meetings other than you and I went and talked to Carissa about some of the stuff with the emergency management budget. Um, did you ever get in touch with anyone on that?
I've not, no.
Okay. Essentially, what happened was the budget was passed at, as it was written out with a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Um, being funded from the county, and according to the I have code. It says the county shall fund those, that budget. We don't have the option, is what it's saying, to decrease that.
They're, she's saying without fifty percent is what it passed, or the hundred percent, or would they?
As, as what they pass, which has the hundred and twenty-six thousand, has been funded from Cassup County.
I saw her email.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I guess, I think, I think we need to request a, a special meeting to review that and have a joint discussion with the board and the E nine one one commission.
Not E nine one one.
Or emergency, emergency management, sorry, not E nine one one. Um, but I think there is a lot of misunderstanding in what was discussed at that meeting, um, from some members I've talked to after the fact. And, yeah, I guess.
From the sounds of it, the majority of the commission were expecting us to reduce that funding by fifty percent anyways. Um.
But what passed at the meeting?
Because of a lack of understanding.
Yeah, I know. They, they were thinking, they, they were thinking that regardless of what they passed, that we would still reduce what we're going to fund.
But that's not how that commission worked.
No.
Well, that's. There's, there is a serious lack of understanding in pretty much everything that happened there. Um, so, I, I mean.
I don't know, but, I mean, that commission has different authority than some of the other commissions in the state.
Well, and.
So, that's my point.
And we use that as one of the pieces in our budget to, um, reduce and support our fund balances. So, if we don't have that as part of our budget, we need to look at other options to keep our fund balances stable. Um, which, with everything being published, I mean, we don't have much options for that right now.
Yeah.
But, um, one of the comments that was made, um, well. There's, there's several pieces to that, and I guess, long story short, I think we need to have a special meeting so they. Long story short, I think we need to have a special meeting so they can review the budget and. And have a vote to either accept what we're going, what we. Had planned on doing or vote to go against it directly.
But just so you know, that they will be held to follow what the county. They, they will not be able to spend more than what the county is giving them because our bubble, our budget has been approved. And while it will be at the public hearing, um, if it's approved, that's the only amount that they can spend.
Well, they'd have fund balance that would, it would. It would eat up fund balance that way. The rest was not changed. It was just the contribution.
Right, but we cannot give more than what that attribution amount is that you approved.
Yep.
So they're, they have enough in the fund.
They did.
It was, it was a ballpark, four hundred thousand dollar fund balance and. The total budget was like one thirty something, if I remember right. And the new vehicle was half of that, roughly.
Yeah, I know.
So, I mean.
It was about sixty some thousand that was gonna go towards a new vehicle and equipment and stuff for it, so.
But I still think you're probably gonna have that meeting and.
That's where.
Change their budget or you're not gonna be standing on solid footing.
Well, that's where I think we need to have a special, request a special meeting, okay.
Because it.
No, and then the other piece with the budget. That we talked, the. Confident, or the conference board.
Oh.
We all spaced it off that we had zero percent everyone for our budget stuffs and. We all forgot it when everyone came in quick at noon, so. We may have to call a special meeting for that. I haven't visited with Chris yet about that. Can't, well, we could do it the same, we could do it like the same day, but they're not the same board, so no.
No, they're not.
Conference board versus.
Oh, the constant board.
Yeah.
Like you mentioned, management board, what'd they give the raise?
Four.
Four percent.
That went through.
Um, no, in ours, in ours, we put it back down to zero and Carissa said she wasn't gonna object to that with everyone else being it.
That'd be her call.
And she's, she said that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I mean, long story short, I think a special meeting is what we need to have for that.
Although, no, I didn't. Um, although I do wanna bring up one thing, when you were talking about, uh, solar ordinance, um. The solar companies coming in. When I was at economic development, I had brought that point up that we're looking at. Um, solar ordinances, the cities would like to have, um. Some kind of involvement or, you know, just discuss with them, you know, before we move forward with an ordinance. Because, you know, they, the cities have been getting contacted, you know.
What their future plans are.
Yeah, for, you know, potentially putting up. Solar farms to help. You know. Subsidize their power.
Yeah.
For the cities, and they just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not going to put anything in place that is going to. Keep them from being able to do that if that's around that they want.
Well, correct me wrong, but if, let's just say the city of Levarian wanted to. Put in a. Five acres of solar, uh, within city limits, the county has, doesn't matter what. County ordinance on that would be, well, or would.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably would.
It would.
It would, because you're, you're.
You're still within the county.
You're, you're within the county, your setbacks would apply.
What was Bill at the Humble guy say?
There you go.
Yeah, go south of the border for that one.
No, and I mean, I, I would imagine there's, there should be fairly easy, um. Ways to get around that. You could. Probably have something as simple as any, any project built to directly supply power to. A city in this county could be exempt or something.
The point is.
Very hard to.
Well, ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have discussions, see what they wanna be doing, what they're planning to do.
Yeah.
And I explained to them to, that the ordinance wasn't going to, you know, directly affect them to be able to get solar for. You know, their cities, if that's something they're looking to, it's more, or less to, you know, protect the egg. You know, agriculture, the.
The tile.
Tiles, the drainage and all that stuff, you know, it's more.
Which that aspect is already covered in our zoning.
Yeah.
Tile agreement or.
Yeah. Drainage district, drainage district procedures.
Yeah, they just wanna be somewhat involved in the conversation of that, so that way they're aware of, and they can, you know, make.
Do we wanna put another discussion for solar ordinance on the agenda in a couple of weeks or anything? Just to keep it fresh in everyone's mind.
Certainly could.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that for two weeks, whenever. Just discussion. All right, anything else, Josh?
No.
Nothing.
That's a card.
Uh, I just had the Farm Bureau meeting last week too, and then, uh, Wellness Committee last Wednesday. Really, the only. Thing from Wellness is. They're wanting to do the movie ticket orders, but they need to order a hundred at a time, so if anyone wants. Movie tickets. Let down to know.
Okay.
It's about it there.
Okay.
Keep walking.
Tammy already touched on it, ISAC here the rest of this week, and I'll be going down with that. Have a meeting for C I J D C Executive Committee this afternoon. And, yeah, I think everything else is pretty well been touched on.
Do you have your email from Tyler?
I saw one come in, I'm.
I forwarded it to Marge too.
I'm pretty sure, well, let me pull it up here.
I think he was notified.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I've talked to her before, she was notified that, like, I, that meeting. I talked with Tyler to double check the things, but it was February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three, so it was like a year ago. I'm. I. Yeah, and, and that was, this, this project did kinda, um. Well, everyone, everyone who was there knows, but we had, obviously, we had some discussion about the. Notification of this project at the Farm Bureau meeting and. I was gonna talk to you or Marge about putting it on the agenda to discuss our drainage, um, policy internally one of these next weeks, whether it's next week. Or a couple of weeks, it doesn't matter, but. Long story short, I think. I, I, I know we, we checked all the boxes in the code, we complied with the law, I'm not, not worried about that at all. I know that was. That was accomplished, um, but. I think we could go above and beyond that and especially on. Major projects that are engineered where we have multiple options that the board's choosing from. I think it would be advantageous to send a notification to landowners when we're doing the. Obviously, opening the bids is one thing, but it's part of the process, but more so considering the bids where we actually make the decision on what we're proceeding with. It would cost a little bit in postage and mailing, but I think it's a no-brainer if we're spending two and a half million on construction. What's another thousand dollars to make sure everyone's notified of the actual bids? So. While we can't change state code, that's state legislators, we could change our internal policy. So that we go above and beyond state requirements, so that would be my. Suggestion, recommendation to the board, whatever, um, I haven't. I haven't spent time to put that into word format in any regard, but I think we could. Discuss our policy and, um, add on to it moving forward.
The only problem with doing more than state code is you have to be consistent.
Yep, and that's where if we put in our policy, we just follow our policy plus state code and it would be consistent for everything.
That's, that's the only issue I have, that you, you gotta stay very consistent, cause if you do partial and then don't do it, then you're in trouble.
I mean, and we sent out postcards for the informational meetings we've done, so I think if we sent out a postcard saying. The bids for this project will be opened on this date. The consideration where the trustees will vote and determine the actual project will be on this date. I mean, short, sweet and to the point, just, it would get some information out and I think, I think that'd be a positive change.
Should also be.
Moving forward.
Something in there, any. Thoughts on the project or what you want should be.
At that point, no, at that point, it's past remonstrance.
No, I mean, it should be given if you, you know, what.
Opinions.
Opinion on tile side, or opinions on.
Like the half or three quarter or plastic or concrete.
Yeah, and, and have it so that they can comment on.
Yep.
The variable things that are in.
That's, that's, yeah, and that's, that's exactly what I was aiming for, that it would. Just a little extra notice to give them a heads up that, um, this was coming and stuff and. I guess. Just as I skimmed through this email, that she's upset that she was not notified that they're going to be digging on the farm. The. Legal notice is through the public hearing, I don't, I don't believe we've ever sent notice before we started a project like this. I think, I think that's just a. Lack of understanding of the process for, and she's not the only landowner, that's, it's, there's others that have.
Well, actually.
They don't have to, it's, it's good if they do.
Hundred times, you know, these contractors, please notify the landowner before I go set foot on their farm. Just do a courtesy call, say, we're gonna, we're moving in today and start. Yeah, but they just don't do it.
Yeah, and, and, and that was discussed at the pre-construction meeting, um, but. At the end of the day. They went out, what they did so far is they went out for tile exploration, they explored. To find the alignment of the old system, that way. They can do final engineering and make sure the alignment of the new one will not cross it multiple times. So. I guess.
It's almost to the point where the engineer might have some responsibility in notifying landlord.
Not really.
Well.
I mean. Their, their job is to oversee the project and do the design side of things.
No control over. The guy doing the project.
Right.
It takes the engineers to make sure it's put in right.
Well, it was, it was communicated that they should contact landowners, so.
But they don't do it.
Well. And that's where I think if we do something internally in our policy that we'd send out a postcard. It'd be one extra layer of information and really with a lot of these systems. Getting to be hundred, hundred twenty-five years old, there's. There's going to be a significant number of repair or improvement projects in the near future, regardless of what happens. I mean, it's just. The systems are aging and they're failing, um, whether it's total failure or. A smaller failure, there's repairs and maintenance that's needed routinely, so. I guess just food for thought, but I think if we. Go a little bit above and beyond the code, it'd be a benefit to. Landowners in all these projects. So. That's my suggestion to the board, but yeah, if we can. Put that on our agenda just to discuss our drainage.
Next week or?
Yeah, that's fine. And we can all think of some wording or any thoughts with that, but, um. I think that's, I think that makes the most sense of where we could make some change that could be uniform and applied. Across everything. But.
On this one, it was the tenant that didn't know, wasn't it?
No, this is a landowner.
I know, but I mean, the tenant was the one that was. At the Farm Bureau meeting, but.
No, that was a landowner as well.
Was it? Yeah.
That, they owned quite a bit of that land and they're family.
Their family.
Yeah, it was him and his brother and his parents and, yeah.
But the, the letter evidently didn't go to him, I didn't understand.
No, it, we didn't send a letter for the, the bid opening.
That's what is.
And, and that's, that's where it's not a requirement in the state law, we never, we never have sent letters for that, but. When you have four options and a project that's over two and a half million dollars, I think we can afford to send a postcard. Or something short and sweet that gives them a little bit of information. I mean, he wasn't asking for the world. He just asked for a little bit more notification, and he, he realized that. We're not, we're not going back to change this one, the contract signed, that's, that's not the issue. His issue wa, or his point was to try and make it better for everyone else moving forward, and I guess that's, that's the way I look at it is. Hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but if we can do things a little bit better with a. Rather low price tag, I think that's a no-brainer. I mean, cause we did an informational meeting on this one. Before we did the public hearing too, so if we send a postcard, it's not gonna cost that much.
No, but I'm, I'm gonna say he was legally notified.
They were, yep, and, and after I told him the dates and everything, he, he acknowledged that, he said, yeah, they got that notice. But they weren't notified for the bid letting and the, the consideration of the bids, which is where we. Actually made the decision on which project we were gonna go and.
But there were several people here.
No, it was just his dad was the only one in the room.
That was the only one here?
That was the only one in the room.
Contractor.
And the contractor and the pipe suppliers and his dad said multiple times. They wanted concrete and they wanted three quarter.
There were several people in the room that I remember, but they were.
But there was only one landowner.
It could be, I don't, I didn't know they all.
And, and I mean. He's, he's not the only one that's fairly upset that the board did not choose the, the. Option of project that was desired by the landowner, even.
Chose the lowest bid.
Shows the lowest bid for that option, yes.
Well, we chose lowest bid, which is what we usually are qualified to do. Sorry, that's what we generally do.
And, and we don't have to rehash that, that's not the point. His point was if. If they would have known, if everyone in the district would have known when that bid consideration was. He thought there would have been more people here and they would have expressed their opinions stronger and then. Hopefully, they would have gotten the option that they wanted, but.
I agree with that totally, but one person is not gonna change the board's mind. Not to accept the lowest bid.
When there are a large chunk of the district.
Yeah, I'm, but we didn't hear about it.
Anyway, that's.
Yep.
That's what I have for today, I don't think there's anything else. So, nine thirty, who would like to make motion to adjourn? Roger? Seconded by Josh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimous, nine thirty-one now. Great, thank you, everyone.
My tax meeting today.